Hi.
Come on in, it's open, we've got a little open window.
Yep.
That's all we got, okay.
Go ahead, shake that, go ahead. You got you.
Yeah.
Okay. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance being led by our fire department and chief.
I would be pleased to see the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated and welcome to our first ordinary business meeting of the month of April, where the village of Boston Spa, board of trustees, got things going a little out of order here. Let me get to the minutes first, just to dispense with those. Kind of get a motion that the minutes of March 24th, 2025 be approved.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandesa, trustee Price Bush, discussion.
I have some comments. Once again, people's statements from the last meeting are in the attachments to this meeting, and they should be attached to the minutes from the last meeting. This will make the most sense, the public reading the minutes, since the minutes and these statements go together. In addition, as I've stated before, is core policy to do this. It'll help the public to know what is being said at the meetings. And as far as the attachments, Gary Stevenson's statement, it was all mixed up, the Gary Stevenson's statement and the attachments, so the pages went back and forth between the two. So they should be unmixed when attached to the 3:24 minute. I have another issue in the minutes. In the minutes, it states, "Motion made by trustee Baskin, seconded by trustee Raymond, to use the public comment collection method agreed to by the zoning advisory committee at its January 2025 meeting." That's, I'm quoting the minutes now. Mayor Rossi called for a roll call vote. Trustee Baskin interrupted the roll call vote. Motion made by trustee Dan Perez, seconded by Mayor Rossi, to table the motion," unquote, from the minutes. So my objection is there's no reference to why I quote interrupted the roll call vote. Once again, I feel like the selected omitting of information in the minutes to basically render my statements in the minutes essentially inexplicable is, I believe, I believe it's a partisan abuse of the love of the government here that I have experienced repeatedly. In fact, I interrupted the roll call vote to remind the mayor that when there is a new motion introduced at a meeting, the public gets 90 seconds each to express their opinion before the vote, per the rules of procedure. The mayor skipped this step in calling for a vote against the rules of procedure. That fact should be in the minutes. I would like to amend the minutes to state, quote, "Trustee Baskin interrupted the roll call vote to remind the mayor that members of the public each get 90 seconds to express their opinions prior to the vote," end quote. That's an amendment I'd like to put forward to explain my interruption.
Bernard, do you accept the amendment?
That amendment, yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Kind of go, with the amended motion now, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're going to move 8A up to the front, out of respect for our fire department, being able to get to their drills, et cetera. Let's first make the motion that the following fire department appointments be made. Fire chief Kevin Crowe, first assistant chief Wilfred Bill Kenny, second assistant chief Stephen Morrissey, third assistant chief Kevin DuBois, and department secretary treasurer Stanley DeLong.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandesa.
Second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion. I would like to make a quick statement. With incoming, we have outgoing as well. And I want to pay homage to chief Bejore for the work he has done. I just want to say to chief, you're my neighbor, so you had to get a double dose of this at all times in terms of the discussions and, you know, seeking counsel and, you know, the back and forth and everything else. I appreciate your hard work. You never turn down the conversation, even when you want to go golfing or whatever else you needed to do in your life. And you had every right to and deserved it with what you put up with. You're a volunteer, as are all of our firefighters. We owe you guys the world. And I just can't say how much enough, how much I appreciate what you do and have done. And I know you're going to still be there for Kevin along the way. Maybe a little bit more golf now, though, instead. But, you know, thank you for everything you did as chief, and we are very indebted to you for what you've done. So thank you again.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Those that we just installed will step forward so that we can see you. Raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I state your name.
I am Stephen Morrissey.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States
Do I swear that I will support the constitution of the United States?
and the constitution of the state of New York?
And the constitution of the state of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
the duties of the office of?
The duties of the office of first assistant chief.
Gets more complicated. In accordance with the laws of the village of Boston Spa?
In accordance with the laws of the village of Boston Spa.
and the state of New York?
And the state of New York.
as well as the constitution, as well as the constitution of the Boston Spa fire department to the best of my ability.
As well as the constitution of the Boston Spa fire department to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, we look forward to working with you. Would you like to say anything, sir?
I'd like to say one thing.
Absolutely.
It'll take a lot of time. Thank you for the support. I know I've been with Mike for the last 10 years. We've been chief together. And this is my third go around, so I'm learning from the process. But I would like to say that we've been on one long road going with town contracts here. And I'd like to go on record to say thank you to Tom Noon and Tom Boston for their support over the years. And it's gotten us to where a little bit that we can function properly the way we need to as a department. We're finding out that we can do a better job at that now with your support. And I want to thank you personally, and I know Mike does too, that you are finally helping us as a village representative and with Bernard at that by your side as the fire commissioner that I've been working with in the past few years. Thank you. All right, so we still got work to do.
Yes, we do.
Right, we're shooting for multi-year contracts so we can settle the dust here year after year. So this is an expensive business. We have about 90 firefighters in this village and very active. You know the work that we do here. We're always here for support, anything we can do. When that 2 o'clock alarm goes off or just a CO detector chirping, people don't know how to change batteries these days, but we do, so we go. All right, we get it done, and we go try to go back to bed and go to work the next day. But thank you, board, look forward to working with you. If you've got my number, email, if you should need something, feel free. All right, thank you.
We are in phenomenal hands. Kevin, thank you very much, chief.
Again, my assistants for a meeting, and thank you.
We're all free to leave, we'll wait for you to exit. Thank you again, guys, for coming.
Yeah.
There's nothing, that's not fair. Didn't think there was.
That's the, well, I knew it was coming. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Does Alexa guys change for the better?
Yeah, he doesn't have to listen to me. Talking about everything under the sun. Okay. Moving right along, we have two public hearings. Remember, five minutes each on these, and let's come out of order here, there we go. Okay, first up is "Village of Boston Spa notice to public hearing to consider adoption of local law. Notice is hereby given pursuant to section 20 of the municipal home rule law that a public hearing will be held by the village of Boston Spa board trustees on April 14, 2025 at 7:01 PM at Village Hall located at 66 Front Street, Boston Spa, New York. The purpose is considering the approval of local law number 3 of 2025. Local law number 3 of 2025, as proposed, overrides the limit on the amount of real property taxes that may be levied by the village of Boston Spa to allow the village to adopt a budget for village purposes for fiscal year 2025 to 2026 that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the quote tax levy limit as defined by general municipal law section 3-C. Copy of proposal of the law number 3 of 2025 can be obtained at the village hall. We will open this at 7:11 PM. If you would like to make a comment on this specific local law, you'll have five minutes to do so, raise your hand. Also, if you're on Zoom, we would like to discuss this, please raise your hand on Zoom. Anybody like to raise your hand to speak about proposed local law number 3 of 2025? I see none, I hear none. And as a result, I'm going to request a motion to close a public hearing related to proposed local law number 3 of 2025.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandesa.
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Of course, I, there we go. Let us go to "Village of Boston Spa notice of public hearing on the 2026 tentative budget. Notice is hereby given pursuant to section 20 of the municipal home rule law of the state of New York that a public hearing will be held by the board trustees of the village of Boston Spa on April 14, 2025 at 7:02 PM at the village hall located at 66 Front Street, Boston Spa, New York, relating to the village of Boston Spa's fiscal year 2026 tentative budget during the regular meeting of the board trustees on April 14, 2025 at 7:02 PM. The public is permitted to attend and provide comments at the above location pursuant to open meetings law 103. A copy of the tentative budget can be obtained at the village offices and on the village's website. We will open this public hearing at 7:13 PM. Same rules apply, five minutes per person. Please raise your hand here if you'd like to speak, or raise your hand on Zoom if you would like to speak on Zoom. But anybody like to, I see Liz on this, so, there you go. No, nobody's raising their hand, Liz.
Liz Carmos, being kind, perhaps some. These are for you to take a look at. Should I pass this down to the board members?
Yeah, Liz, you're going to be a little loud because we have a car truck outside our window too, right?
Okay. What's in front of you are some charts. As you know, I've been tracking village finances for now's 10 years. And so I like to look at what trends are. And so these are trends, I'm not going to go through these in detail, but I thought it would be useful for you and for the public to see. The first chart just shows how taxes have risen. And this increase in taxes, this is Milton taxes, you know, is about $40,000 over the tax cap, which you just passed a resolution to cede the tax cap so you can do this. It also took $262,000 out of fund balance in order to balance this budget. So if you look at the next chart, revenues less expenses went negative fiscal year 2024. Taxes are increasing above the tax cap, and the fund balance is decreasing to cover the shortfall. So if you look at the Romano administration, there was very low revenueless taxes. And now it's also very low revenue taxes. Recurring revenues less recurring expenses, this is a measure suggested by the comptroller's office. In fiscal year 25, we actually had a approximately $750,000 increase in revenues that aren't going to happen again. So it's the sale of Whizwall, insurance, a few other things that happened. So when you look at recurring revenues and recurring expenses, it really shows you if you're managing your finances well. And as you can see, projected is negative, and even the tentative budget for Fandesa is negative. The next one is just by type. It shows salaries and factorials, those are up also. Expenses by type on the next page, page three, shows equipment and capital outlay. There was, this year, a fair amount for equipment, but the, in the budget, but in the projected, there's somewhat less, and there's less going forward in this budget. The fire department expenses, they've risen significantly since fiscal 2024.
Two-minute warning.
And so, you know, you can see these. So if you look through these, they're by department, they explain, you know, what the trends are. Actually, if you look at page seven, there's a chart of salary increases. Now, in your executive summary, you said those salary reaches for the village staff, except for trustees, mayor, and police department reflect increases of at least 2.5%. But if you look at this chart, the average is 7.6%. So, and some of the salaries rose, you know, into the double digits. So the last one is, the last few ones are water rates. Those are up, and unfortunately, we don't have a separate waterfront, so we tend to use those additional income in covering regular expenses when they have millions of dollars of infrastructure needs on the water side. And then the fund balance is the last. The last thing I'll say is that I was really happy to see that you were going to create a capital plan. The idea of a capital plan takes back.
Hold on, can you say that again?
No, I was happy that you presented a capital plan. The idea of a capital plan goes back to 2020, before we received a report on Village Hall. Some of those repairs according to that report are finally being addressed this coming year, 2020 to 2025. I recommended a long-term facilities plan in May of '21. Mayor Woolbright just wanted to fix this building, didn't end up doing that. We all know the EMS building came available, and that was purchased.
15 seconds to get it back, what I saw for a minute.
Capital plan was created by me and trustee Raymond. Unfortunately, when I looked at this budget, I didn't see the capital plan in this budget.
And your time's up. Anybody else?
Thanks for doing all this work, Liz.
Yeah.
Oh, if anybody wants an Excel version of the budget, I have that, or if you want to look into it.
Last call for anybody who'd like to comment on this tentative budget for fiscal year 2026, going once, going twice. And seeing none, I will ask for a motion to close public hearing related to the tentative budget at 7:19 PM.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fandesa.
A second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion.
I was sort of assuming that we would leave this open because we're going to be.
We cannot.
Why not?
By law, it can only be day-to-day, short of the 28th, according to the comptroller. So there will be public comments allowed generally at the next meeting that could encompass this because it will be an agenda item. Like, we cannot keep the public hearing open by law to the 28th.
Because you have to close the day before, you're saying?
No, it has to be closed at a time short of this, from my understanding.
I don't know the exact number.
So it can't be the 28th, can't go to the day.
We cannot go to the 28th itself, no. But again, there will be public comments and written comments available too, if people like. So we've got plenty of opportunities. This is, this is the formality function of the whole thing. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, there are no presentations tonight. We have two changes before I get into public comment and agenda items only, which will be three minutes per speaker. And again, if you're on Zoom, this would be a good time to raise your hand on Zoom if you'd like to speak of an agenda item. First, for consent agenda item number three for Play Hollow Summer Kickoff, just note that the option one for front street closure is not going to be opted for. It's going to be either option two or option three. Go for it, absolutely.
Sorry, I did talk to the chiefs, and it was a no-go on the front street, so.
So could I ask why?
Because they want to keep it clear. So what we're going to allow, what we're going to allow is Low Street, what I suggest at least.
My best advice, go to public comment. In a second, you'll have three minutes to say whatever you want about it, and.
So what I'm suggesting is that we approve both option two, which is down here with Low Street. I texted you, but I don't think you saw the text about getting the middle of the crosswalk signs.
I did see, I haven't been able to.
Over here to kind of address your concern about people crossing the street.
I couldn't get to the EPW.
Can I repeat that one?
So we have these signs, these signs that are available on Hyde Boulevard during, like, the warmer months. They get taken down for plowing. It just reminds people that this is a crossing, it makes it more visible because you raised your concern about traffic and pedestrians crossing. And I would suggest that we also allow for your option three, which would be Iron Spring, as a just in case, so.
What is the chief's concern?
They do not like front street being closed, it's an access issue. And we, we agree with going forward with this, what do you call it?
Family Fun Day.
Sliding, family fun day, sliding, a bunch of things. You know, we're moving family fun day off of front street. Sliding, we are going to keep that corridor open for front street. So it's, it's a consistent thing that they have been pretty clear about.
Car show is kind of the only exception that they.
Malta Avenue, would love to close Malta Avenue, but they have, and they've asked for it, but we, fire departments basically said, please do not do that.
So they're not going to do their festival anymore either?
They do that on another street.
On the backside of this one, basically.
So we allow them to shut down.
What is that street name?
Pine, isn't it?
Uh, Pine, I want to say, yeah.
So I know it's not what you wanted, but we still allow.
More the concern of the car.
Let me do this. So we're going to be making that change to the motion to just make sure it's clear. Also, we're going to walk on a motion P related to the purchase of a 2025 Chevrolet Tahoe CK10706, four-wheel drive, four-drive commercial vehicle for chief's vehicle, and including an payment plan for that, which was sent to the board earlier today by our treasurer. So that's walk-on P coming up. So now we have three minutes for public comment for any agenda item. If you'd like to go first, you go right ahead. Yeah.
Hi, my name's Natalia, I am the owner of Play Hollow, which is a forty front street.
A little bit louder, just want to make sure the mic can get you.
Natalia, I own our Play Hollow on 40 Front Street. Part of the reason that I host the summer kickoff this year, we're going to be hosting it with another Boston Spa business, who's standing right here next to me, Christine from Fit for Mom. Part of the reason that we were requesting that closure was to slow down the traffic a little bit, and given that the event is growing, and there's more people, I wanted to make sure that, because sometimes people on front street go really fast. And it's on a day that there's not a lot of businesses open. I was trying to also be very mindful of where the closures would be so that it wouldn't affect others' business days. So that's why that wish list was there for that Plan One. Also, to allow for more involvement of the brick and mortar, so people can walk to the brick and mortars for the stand cards, which was another venture that we wanted to do this year, and then.
Yeah, and just overall accessibility. So we know that sidewalks are being improved, which I greatly appreciate. I have a child who has a physical disability. I'm also with Fit for Mom, pushing wagons and strollers alongside moms up and down the sidewalks, so we greatly appreciate everything that's being done. And another consideration that's not always thought about is the volume of people utilizing sidewalks. So while we could be ADA compliant in our renovations and the access and the zero entry pieces of accessibility, when you have a volume of people utilizing those sidewalks, it makes it less accessible to anyone in general, but it makes it even less accessible to the people with mobility aids, moms, families with strollers and wagons. So we wanted to really be thoughtful about that for this event and encourage you for future events as well to think about that when we're utilizing those spaces.
Let me offer you this, out of respect for what you're saying, and since we don't have the fire chiefs here to really question, can we approve it without the option one tonight? So at least you know you're good to go with something, and get a meeting together to discuss your concerns with the fire chiefs in a near-future date because we have more meetings between now and the event? Would that be amenable?
And also, I would just appreciate the consistency.
I agree.
If it's not okay here, then it should be blanket, right?
I think the car show, unfortunately, no matter what we do, that one's not going to be able to be handled very well without the front street closure, but we are trying to minimize based on the feedback. But again, let's, let's have a conversation and see where we can go, but at least get you your approval. So it's a great event, and we don't want to deter from that at all from this.
I wonder if it would be possible for your fire chief, and also if it would be helpful to potentially just shorten off the parking spaces to narrow the street, but not cut it off, and it'll give you more space? I don't know if that would be of any use at all, or even possible.
Something. Or make it one way, is that like?
We, I think we should probably sit down with the chiefs at this point. I hear what you're saying, make it now, you know.
There's, there's different things considered here, but I think we will be punting on something we don't really know.
I would offer this, I do think it is a concern to have, like, vendors and stuff that, you know, because essentially, they have to go through, which God forbid, I hope they don't have to, we wouldn't want it to be an impediment, you know.
Well, that's why we had flow, even in the Plan One where there was flow.
I understand, I understand. I mean, they, they've, trust me, this is a, this has been a complaint I've heard from them about other events. And they're like, for instance, car show would not, they don't allow, so car show, both, family fun day and car show, they're like, do not block Bath Street. It's, I get it, it's, so how about, I will reach out to you, I don't have your contact, but I have Natalia's. I'll reach out to you and our fire chief and Frank.
But you want to use Whizwall Park?
I do, yes.
Are you saying that you can't use Whizwall Park if the front street's open because it's not safe?
It's gotten warmer and more crowded, so then we have a lot of people crossing, and there's more vendors. And the whole idea behind the summer kickoff was to encourage people to come in to Boston Spa and spend in local businesses or highlight businesses that were maybe not with a brick and mortar or brands that weren't here, and it's gotten popular, so, which is great. But then it starts becoming an issue with, I don't want, especially because it's a family-oriented event, there's a lot of kids to be crossing, and suddenly a car whiffs by on front street. So that's why we were giving outlets, so that if somebody comes in on Milton, they can go up, or if they come down, come from the area of Bath, they can go down Spring. But there have been village events in the past that block the entire front street.
Would a crossing guard help? Like, it doesn't.
Essentially, we've never asked for, and that's one of the things about this event too, we try to be mindful of the village's budget, and this has been a completely business-budgeted event. If that is a possibility that we could discuss, that could also.
Please chief also, maybe it would be a good discussion point. So we'll, we'll work to get something together for you. But again, I just want to get you an approval tonight, at the very least, and then we'll go to the next step in that. And again, just to be clear, the change in the motion will reflect at the end. Option one in the attachments will currently not be approved, but will be considered possibly in a later date. Would that be fair? Okay, thank you very much, the both of you. Anybody else? Liz, and Liz, she's referring to this Liz.
This one.
Thanks for stopping by. And again, just before you do this, if anybody's on Zoom, we would like to give a comment to, toward agenda items only. Please raise your hand, this would be the perfect time to do so. Liz, go ahead.
All right, Liz, it's been a long, long time ago. I want to talk on behalf of the SVPa about the movies in the park. So first, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew the movies that we wanted to do. I think some of the trustees haven't heard that yet, so in June, on the 7th, we would like to play Toy Story. And in July, we are going to do a Christmas in July theme, and we're going to do Elf. And then in August, we are going to do Wicked, and it's going to be the small version. So.
I hear Mike Defying Gravity ready right now, okay?
I'm ready with it. So we are hoping to be able to use this whole part, but as a backup, we put on our application that we would go to down to Gold Iron Spring, and we have like a screen that we can set up. And we have like a screen that we can set up down there. So just wanted to let you guys know about that and ask for your support hopefully. And if anybody has any questions, you can let me know or Ed know or Dana know. And I wanted to double check if Dana sent you the insurance and if not, I can. Sorry, Dana.
We do not yet.
We don't believe yet, but we'll verify.
Okay, great. I will work on that for you then and thank you.
Thank you. Liz?
Liz Cormos, eighty-nine Hyde, I've got four items, eight I on this contract. You know, I believe that these contracts require two verbal bids. And I'd like to know what the, the other bidder, you know, who, who they were.
Just to answer that actively for you, unfortunately, I don't have the paperwork. But Jen did it before she went on cruise. The numbers were twenty thousand and higher than twenty thousand, from my memory on these. And this was by far the cheapest, including soil especially. So this was by far the best bid for us, just to be aware of that.
And I was wondering, why wasn't the sod contract combined with the paving and pavilion to do a single project instead of piecemealing this? Was this to avoid a RFP or what? It would seem this size project would make sense to do under one contract. So that's my comment on that. On AJ, what resolution is attached? There is nothing in the attachments that says resolution about.
I just pulled it out.
About the tower. And where does it say resolution on it? The document said.
You might have missed it, Liz, because we just, I pulled it out actually before the meeting from the attachment.
Okay, well anyways. It's a resolution to do a three hundred sixty-one nine thirty-five bond anticipation.
No, that's not it.
That's not it?
That's not it. This was about the cell equipment on the tower and declaring it that it needs to come out for health safety and welfare reasons.
Which is the ban?
The ban is not a motion. It's there for information purposes for mayor's announcements.
That's, your attachments are confusing because a ban is the bonded anticipation note and they usually use when you have insufficient funds. And so I was wondering, you know, is this a short-term need? Why are you doing a ban? Is a ban more economical than just taking the money out of, of the fund balance? Because you've got to pay fees and all that. So I, I just found it not very transparent, frankly, to find what, what you were talking about with this ban. Because it didn't say anything about what it's for. Also, why is the Wiswall Park pavilion RFP being reissued? Says it's being reissued, I don't know why.
Zero bids, we anticipate one bid by reissuing.
And then again, who was the second bidder on, on eight O?
We, we had multiple bids on that and that was the best bid by two hundred ninety dollars.
Yeah, I, I contend that, you know, when you have multiple bids and vendors, they should be identified so that people know who's bidding on, on the work for the village. Thank you.
Carolyn?
Carolyn Stevenson, forty-five West High Street. I want to address the meeting minutes from the last trustee's meeting and specifically item twelve A, which dealt with zoning and the timeline. So I just want to let the trustees know, we had very large turnout at the public rezoning workshop, which was held on April third, standing room only. However, I'm very disappointed that the deadline for comments from the public has been extended for only four additional days. And the deadline now is April twenty-fifth. In light of the lack of transparency in making these changes, I'm asking the trustees to extend the deadline for public comments for the draft zoning for two additional weeks, ending May ninth. So why am I asking for this? In a few words, lack of public access to the information and lack of transparency on decision-making related to the draft zoning. According to what I've been able to determine, there have been at least four or five changes to the draft zoning map during the comment period. And that's kind of unheard of in government. You know, that's causing confusion. It's causing a lot of misinformation. And I can go into detail, but I, I don't have the time here. I just want to let you know that that's not the way government should roll out a comment period on a very foundational public policy issue, which is zoning. Who is making these decisions? Why is this information being transmitted only on the official Facebook page of the mayor? At the last meeting, you heard several village residents saying we should not be using social media to communicate these important decisions. We have a democratically appointed advisory committee, the zoning advisory committee, that has been sidelined because the disgraced chairperson was told to lie so the mayor could tell everyone in the community that the ZAC's role was over. And it is not. The public deserves a process that is not chaotic and self-serving. A process that allows the public to observe decision-making rather than having decisions made in secret by who knows who. Keeping the public informed is not good enough. They must be present.
Five seconds.
They must be present during these discussions. And the ZAC is the only advisory committee appointed by the trustees to carry it out. By the way, the next meeting of the ZAC.
The time is up.
This Thursday, seven PM fifty, West High Street. Thank you.
No, but it'll be to tackle the mayor's announcements, thanks for the time. Gary, go right ahead.
I'll be brief. I'd like to speak to an item regarding the agenda item on the minutes from the last trustee's meeting.
This is about the agenda tonight though. So if you want to do that, please do that at the, at the second public hearing.
Let's see, approval of the minutes here was the agenda.
Specifically, you're talking about items on the agenda or the minutes from last time. Like, let's just streamline this, do that on the second part of the.
It is on the agenda. I'm sorry, it's on the agenda. I don't, I don't understand why I can't speak.
You can speak, but I'm just trying to like stick to the motions that we're trying to get people's feedback on.
This is the only number of times the public has.
It's not, it's nothing relevant on the agenda for that part of it. So she's correct. However, Gary, go ahead, you have two minutes, forty-six seconds, go.
She took up my time.
No, she didn't actually. You started.
I'd like to speak to an item regarding the agenda item on the agenda of the minutes from the last trustee's meeting. Here I brought to the mayor and trustees' attention that the village was in violation of the open meeting law, specifically regarding making available to the public draft meeting, meeting minutes for the various boards. It is clear that no action to remedy the situation has been taken though. Three weeks have passed. This is a simple problem to resolve and I for one am very disappointed that the village apparently is not interested in prioritizing transparency with the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ray?
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question pertaining to.
Just, anyway, just for record purposes.
Sixteen, no for Captain.
Clerk, get that?
Got that here? Let's see, it was the one pertaining to the, uh, here to the B, about the Studio A work that's going to be done. I read through what it is, their listing that they were going to do. And I didn't see anything in there. I did see about repairing the fence at the dog park. But I didn't see anything that addressed moving it to an area that is more accessible to those that have disabilities or senior citizens or any of us that may need not to walk half a mile or however far it is down to there. Just wondering, and then maybe you could answer this since you're the liaison from Parks Room. Has that even been brought up or considered? I know I've brought it up for a couple of years, but I was just curious if it was being considered to move that to a place where it's more accessible to more people? Or if it's just going to be stuffed in the back corner or it always has been?
Right, so I think what you're saying could make a lot of sense. I am not unfortunately in a lot of the conversations between Frank and Caitlin in Studio A. So they would know better than I all the conversations that have occurred. And so that is a good question about whether to move it and if it's feasible, I think Studio A should consider that.
Right, to answer, that has not been a conversation per se. Right now, it's preliminary stage because there's a grant available in state of New York for parks and green space. And we're attempting to get Studio A engaged to help us assemble the grant materials for, I think it's either June, July deadline coming up on that. And so I, I did make clear and Caitlin knows and she's going to be probably reaching out to both you and Anna because I know you both have particular interests in, for instance, the playground and other things based on Kelly Park, to give some additional ideas on things you think need to happen inside Kelly Park especially. And also probably get some Lions feedback on Iron Spring Park, which is kind of near and dear to them. So this is just, at least just preliminary stage stuff to get them engaged for the purposes of grant prep and everything else and coming up with the general plan so that we have that to go along with the grant.
Okay, yeah, and like I say, I was just curious because I would love to take my dog down there, but I can't make it all that, that distance where I'm in front of my car.
I hear you, absolutely. Anybody else? Seeing none, hearing none, going once, going twice, and gone. Can't wait, we're going to get back from our cruise because this multitasking thing's going to hold real quick. But we got this. Can I get a motion to approve the items on the following consent agenda as revised per discussion during public comments?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Baskin, trustee Fundanza, in that order, all in favor? Close, motion carries. We've already done A and again, thank you to our fire department. Can I get a motion to accept the attached proposal from Studio A to perform work related to potential renovations at Iron Spring Park at three thousand dollars and Kelly Park at five thousand dollars for a total of eight thousand dollars and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement? I go to trustee Baskin and get trustee Fundanza to second, all in favor? All right, discussion first, sorry.
For the Kelly Park, is that something outside of the, the playground already?
Well, no, playground's being evaluated too because it too is probably in need of some kind of major updating. That's kind of the universal idea there. So we want to maintain a playground of, you know, great interest and excitement, but we also have to make sure it's up to code and everything else. So I think that's part of that. All in favor in that? Oppose, motion carries. Can I get a motion that the attached list be declared excess equipment for the library? Trustee Price Bush, trustee Fundanza, discussion, all in favor? Oppose, motion carries. Can I get a motion that the library be authorized to accept change order number one dash zero zero four for bunk off General Contractors Incorporated in the amount of eight hundred forty-nine dollars for a gutter and downspout for the elevator mechanical room?
Make the motion.
Trustee Raymond? Trustee Price Bush, discussion, all in favor? Oppose, motion carries. Can I get a motion that the library be authorized to accept change order number three dash zero zero three for Allegiant Heating in the amount of three thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars fifty-three cents for additional fire alarm devices? Trustee Fundanza? Trustee Price Bush, discussion, all in favor? Oppose, motion carries. Can I get a motion that the attached list of standard workday report be adopted with one amendment to put me as elected, not appointed?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fundanza? Trustee Price Bush, discussion. I caught that just a little bit ago when I was looking back at it, so we'll make that fix.
Trustee Raymond and I are actively monitoring our time and we'll bring that forward in the coming months.
I am concerned because you have been actively updating since last May, according to our deputy treasurer, deputy clerk on this. And we're one year later, still waiting for workday report.
Yep, we need to finish it off. Need to finish it off.
Okay, but it's only a three-month look back is supposedly what we're supposed to send in, just to be aware.
As was explained in emails, it wasn't done consistently. And then I started doing it consistently more recently, so it'll be a full, complete, consistent record.
Well, we did ask over a month ago and so still waiting, but we have to process something.
Yeah, the regulations state, we just need to submit it before the end of our term.
Okay, well, the state actually is telling us, the NICE board is requesting this, demanding it actually. We want one meeting longer, excuse me, longer than we should to get this out and give you the opportunity. But nonetheless, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Can I get a motion approving the attached lubricant agreement for DPW between Xylem and the Village of Boston Spa and authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement? Trustee Fundanza? Trustee Price Bush, discussion?
Xylem? Sounds like.
The tree stuffy, yeah. Went back to my old biology days, yeah. All in favor? Oppose, motion carries. Can I get a motion approving the attached grant agreement between Saratoga Arts and the Village of Boston Spa and authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Baskin, trustee Fundanza, discussion?
I just want to commend Octavia's continued partnership with the village. She's brought, she's a really wonderful artist and she's brought opportunities for people that live here to take lessons and learn and it's just a good, good way to incorporate people into the arts. Maybe they're not comfortable for the first time, so we're just excited that she does it.
Amen, and all in favor? Oppose, motion carries. Can I get a motion approving the attached agreement related to sod and topsoil installation for Wiswall Park between Drums Turf and Saw LLC and the Village of Boston Spa totaling eighteen thousand seven oh five fifty and authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fundanza? Trustee Price Bush, discussion?
Did we look at the alternative of just seeding the soil?
There's no way, I mean, just go out there right now and look at it, there's no way.
Well, not right now.
Well, it needs to be usable for June, so.
So saw is the only way.
And honestly, we, just to take something out of my mayor's announcements for later, we originally had gotten stakes into survey and realized how badly crowned that area was and basically took out the stakes, although we did keep general points where they could not absolutely need the stakes back in to do what they needed to do there, but they took the crown down quite a bit. Now, it's not completely gone, obviously, it's a hill no matter what you do over there. But it is so much more even so that now that they can actually get, they got the subbase in, you can see over there, and they did a great job. I actually was really impressed by what we had seen the day that the stakes were in versus where we are at right now. So thanks to DPW for that work as well. But yeah, there's still more to go there with disturbance of the topsoil area, the dirt area. So sod's going to be the only way to go here to get anything in. They'll, they'll take one day or it just has to set for about two weeks, twelve to fourteen days probably, so. All in favor?
Oppose, and, and that's a case where we did have bids.
Yes.
It would be helpful to just seed it like.
I, you know, if I had caught it before Jen had left, I would have absolutely, I didn't have it unfortunately. So I apologize for that. Oppose, motion carries. We're going to look for an approval of the attached resolution related to John Street Tower attachments. I will read it as best I can, I see it's going. Whereas, based on the exterior of the John Street drinking water storage tank, it's leased to multiple communications carriers. And whereas leases require carriers to be provided with access to the tank surface for routine maintenance and upgrades that could damage the tank coating negatively impacting coating service life. And whereas on September seventh, twenty sixteen, Utility Services Group inspected the John Street storage tank and recommended rehabilitation of the interior and exterior tank coatings. And whereas the September seventh, twenty sixteen inspection report also identified that there were quote areas where the paint was burned when cell antenna brackets were welded on, which may have been painted over, but the coating did not last long and are starting to rust. And whereas lease terms and equipment locations require relocation requirements have historically complicated and caused tank coating maintenance to be deferred. And whereas on February fifth, twenty twenty-four, the Village of Boston Spa received bids for John Street, John Street Tank Rehabilitation is subsequently aborted. The construction contract to USG Water Solutions with a deductible alternative that would construct a communications corral above the tank surface to simplify future recoding efforts. And whereas communications carriers notified of the planned rehabilitation project and carriers were provided with an option to share in the cost of a communications corral to simplify future tank maintenance efforts. And whereas meetings. corral to simplify future tank maintenance efforts, and whereas meetings held with carriers during November and December 2024 indicated support for the construction of a permanent monopole at the John Street Tank site that would allow all communications equipment to be permanently removed from the tank, and whereas the carriers estimate that the cost to construct the monopole would be less than the estimated $156,780 cost to install a communications corral on the John Street Tank, and whereas the cost for temporary equipment relocation may be equivalent to the cost of constructing a new monopole, and whereas the monopole option would require carriers to relocate equipment once, eliminating considerable costs associated with temporary equipment relocation for the current rehabilitation project and future repair projects, and whereas the monopole will allow carriers to improve service to residents of the village and surrounding areas. Ready? Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Village of Alsaspa Board of Trustees hereby determines that the leased areas of the tank are needed for water supply purposes and requiring removal of communications equipment from the John Street Storage Tank to allow exterior tank coating commence on March 1, 2026. Be it further resolved, the board trustees authorizes the mayor to notify leaseholders at, one, the village has determined that leased areas on the tank are needed for water system purposes and requiring all communications equipment to be removed by March 1, 2026. Two, the village intends to work with one or more carriers to construct a permanent monopole at the storage tank parcel to eliminate costs associated with temporary relocation and allow carrier equipment to be relocated to a new structure independent of the storage tank. Three, the village will take ownership of and assist with permitting for a new monopole to be constructed by one or more carriers. Four, the village will provide time for monopole permitting in construction by authorizing a change order to extend the construction schedule for exterior tank coating to commence on May 1, 2026. Five, all costs associated with monopole construction, the estimated $42,373 cost for deferred exterior tank coating shall be paid by one or more carriers. Six, current leases will be revised by addendum to recover additional construction costs. Seven, expired leases will be renegotiated or recover additional construction costs in current market lease rates. Can I get somebody to make a motion in a second? Trustee Fundanza?
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion on this resolution.
So the tower's 180 feet?
The monopole will be 180 feet as designed.
Right, and I know someone called about that, is there significant concern about that by neighbors or anybody else?
I think there's always the general concern, but you're also already having a water tower sitting there at, you know, 90-plus feet, I think it is, so, you know, it's, pick your poison, hour, and again, I think anybody that is within the vicinity to the north side where the trees block the current tennis sets are going to actually be happy because they're going to get cell service that they don't currently have by putting it up in that direction. We're also going to reach out and see if Saratoga County Emergency Services wants to be a fifth carrier possibly, which would still be over the trees, probably around 140 feet or thereabouts where they'd be positioned, so. You open up some possibilities on that. Later on, we could always sell that tower if we wanted to, granted you'd lose the rent, but you could get, we were talking maybe in the excess of a million dollars for something like that down the line, something to consider, but, you know, it's the short-term rent versus the long-term, you know, loss of rent for the short bang for the buck on that. But that's what I got on that. This is just to help us push them off the current tower expeditiously, or as expeditiously as you can make that happen in this situation, and, you know, any agreement that we currently have that would suggest that they could stay would be nullified by this resolution so that we could force the issue of need be. And I'll go to this, so. All in favor?
Aye.
So you can get a roll call on this one? Yep.
Trustee Baskin?
Aye.
Trustee Raymond?
Aye.
Trustee Hameka?
Yes, aye.
Trustee Price Bush?
Yes.
And yes. Five to zero, the motion and resolution carry. Can I get a motion approving the request of the Ethics Board for use of special counsel services, Sarah Berger Esquire of Berger Law Group?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fundanza? Trustee Price Bush, discussion? All in favor?
Sorry, do we? We want to limit on the number of hours, or?
I don't think there was a request specific in, it said, I think it was a couple hour
Yeah, she thought two hours would be enough. I don't know if we want to include that or don't tie their hands.
I, without having it in that email, I don't feel comfortable limiting it. Anybody else want to weigh in on that?
I think we'll be fine.
All in favor as written?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Can I get a motion approving the attached Arbor Day proclamation?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Baskin?
I'll second.
Trustee Fundanza? Discussion?
We should make you read that.
I've got more to come, don't you worry. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Let me skip M for now, just so I can get my voice back. Can I get a motion approving reissuance of the Wiswol Park Pavilion RFP for a period of one week ending Monday, April 21, 2025, 4:00 p.m. with bid opening to be held at that time?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fundanza?
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, discussion, just to repeat what I said earlier when Liz had asked about it, we'd received zero bids, but one of the issues was that one of the would-be bidders we learned had an insurance level issue, they didn't have time to go seek a rider, so at this point, we will go out and re-advertise this as normal for, with the attorney advised there, but they're working on getting their rider in the meantime so that we at least would get one bid. We can make no guarantees, as I said to them, that somebody else doesn't come along and bid in this whole process, but at least we're doing this with the knowledge that there is an interested bidder somewhere out there, and we still have to do it in this manner according to the law.
Is there something unusual about the bid that there were no bidder, or did they not get, did they not know?
You're prefabbing a pavilion, and so normally it's going to take people probably in the general vicinity to do that in the first place, or your shipping cost's going to go out of this world, and so I can't tell you beyond that. Do we think we'd get a couple bidders? Yeah, but we only would end up with probably one, it looks like, just the way it goes here, but we have to do our diligence for, because of the value, it's assumed to be probably well over $60,000 for this pavilion. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Can I get a motion approving the lowest annual village mowing bid by TMC for $18,710 and authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the team, with TMC after review by the village attorney?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fundanza?
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. P up, for once I remembered. Can I get a motion approving the purchase of the 2025 Chevrolet Tahoe CK10706 four-wheel drive 4 vehicle for a purpose of chief vehicle and approving the mayor to enter into an agreement for purchase over a four-year period?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Fundanza?
I'm recusing myself.
Okay, that's fine. There goes.
Second.
Trustee Raymond, discussion?
So is this in the budget?
Yes, it was actually, yeah, for at least one payment for this year, so yes, he's good. And then it's also in the next year's budget for another payment. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
I take it back.
And refusal by Mary. Okay, back to M. This is the approval of resolutions related to Pro local law number 3 of 2025 pursuant to New York State General Municipal Law Section 3C to permit the Village of Alsaspa to exceed the property tax cap for the fiscal year 2026 beginning on June 1, 2025. Opposed to what Liz had said during public comment, we have not approved this yet. Now, now is the period where we would do so. When it comes to local laws, we usually hand it off to our village attorney, and we'll do so right now.
I apologize for the call.
You're fine, you warned us, don't worry.
I'm going to have to run back and get water this time.
You're fine. We have delivery right behind you coming up, I think so.
Oh, thank you. So, as we discussed a month ago when we first talked about this, this, in order to override the tax cap, the village board has to have authority to do that. This local law gives you the authority, it does not require you to do it, just gives you the authority to do it. And so if you look, every municipality that has to do it, the law is basically identical, and it's just like every other local law. So if you wish to do that, thank you, we have to first go through SEACRA, which is, I know, all your favorite. So you have before you the Part II and III of the EAF, and I can read it, but I would prefer not to.
Yeah, really.
So.
Please don't.
Hey, you're far away, Portraying that, like, sitting next to me. I did take the liberty, there's questions 1 through 11 on Part II, I took the liberty of saying there's no small impact. Remember that the SEACRA is the adoption, that's the action being taken. Does the board agree that there is no small impact with the adoption?
Yeah.
Environmental.
Yeah.
People.
Correct, correct, this is just the environmental part. And then Part III, you'll notice that there is a narrative there indicating the purpose of this and that there was a hard look being taken, which is what you're doing right now under SEACRA.
Riley doesn't like her math, clearly.
It's called making an entrance, right there. And.
You can take it down if need be for now, don't worry about it, go ahead.
If the board, does the board wish to issue a determination of no?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so if that's the case, you also have before you a resolution. The resolution does indicate that you're issuing a negative declaration and.
Twist the legs, Riley, you twist the legs, they go.
I'm happy to read the resolution unless another board member wants to read the resolution.
I will read the resolution.
I just don't think you want me copying.
No, exactly. Well, this is, I got the resolution for the passage, am I doing that, or the resolution for no?
I'm trying to make sure. It's in both.
It's, it's both are in here, is what you're saying? Okay, so, resolution of board trustees of Village of Alsaspa, subject is adoption of local law 3 of 2025, a law to override the tax levy limit established in General Municipal Law 3-C within the Village of Alsaspa, whereas the board of trustees of the Village of Alsaspa, what the board is considering, the adoption of local law number 3 of 2025, which would, if adopted, create a law to override the tax levy limit established in General Municipal Law 3-C within the Village of Alsaspa, whereas the board finds that the adoption of local law 3 of 2025 is a necessary proper exercise of authority by the board, and whereas pursuant to Section 20 of the Municipal Home Rule Law, public hearing on the proposed adoption of local law 3 of 2025 was duly conducted on April 14, 2025 at 7:01 p.m. at the village hall, and whereas the board has considered the public comments made at the public hearing, and whereas the board, serving as lead agency for this unlisted action under SEACRA, reviewed a short environmental assessment form and determined that the action does not present any adverse environmental impacts, and whereas at the thorough review and deliberation, the board proposes to adopt local law number 3 of 2025, and whereas the attorney for the village has prepared the necessary documents for filing this local law with the Secretary of State, including the text of the law itself. Therefore, be it resolved that the board hereby adopts local law number 3 of 2025 in annex here too, and be it further resolved that the board adopts and authorizes filing of a negative declaration, and be it further resolved that the board hereby authorizes village clerk and the attorney for the village to make such minor modifications to the local law documents as they deem necessary, and thereafter are directed to execute and file the said documents as required by law and to take all of the necessary actions for the promulgation thereof. Can I get a motion and a second on this?
I'll make it.
Trustee Fundanza on the motion?
I'll second.
Trustee Price Bush, seconds. Discussion?
No problem. I prepared a statement for this, so I'll just read it.
For the SEACRA?
No, this is. I'm fine with raising taxes if the additional appropriations are used to cover annual maintenance and operating costs. However, there's some, some annual budgets that are in excess and could be trimmed, and those safe funds then can either be put back into the fund balance or preferably transferred into capital improvement or equipment reserve funds above what is already allocated for this budget year. We should be increasing taxes to cover our annual maintenance and operations costs and stop using fund balance, which is primarily revenues from fees, to make up the annual budget gap. For the most part, this budget appears to do that. Our future revenues from fees should be used to create capital improvement and equipment funds, and we should reduce our fund balance by transferring it into specific capital improvement or equipment reserve funds, infrastructure, building, parks, fire department, equipment, DPW equipment, et cetera. So we have a more appropriate fund balance of 1.5 million per New York State Comptroller guidance. This would greatly increase our eligibility for grants while providing funding for future projects and equipment.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I have a statement. I will vote to allow this board to increase taxes beyond the tax cap. However, if we do ultimately exceed the tax cap, we should do so only to address capital improvements, in my opinion. As it stands today, I believe the operational budget is somewhat bloated and could easily be cut to below the tax cap, which would require about $40,000 in cuts. I want to make clear, this is not a vote for the budget as it stands, nor for any specific tax higher than the tax cap. As we face possible economic hard times and inflation, we need to be particularly sensitive to how we can most effectively use the tax dollars provided by our property owners, keeping the operational budget under control while focusing on long overdue capital improvements, especially in the context of the additional burden of rising water and sewer rates. Only if the ultimate budget adequately funds capital improvements and keeps operational costs under control will I vote for a budget that exceeds the tax cap.
Anybody else? Roll call?
Trustee Baskin?
Yes.
Trustee Raymond?
Yes.
Trustee Fundanza?
Yes.
Trustee Price Bush?
Yes.
Mayor Lawson?
Yes. And that is five zero, approval on that, and we are done with motions. Mayor's announcements, got a few things here. First off, as everybody who's entered tonight has found out the hard way, we do have large oversized maps available for the draft zoning. And to address some of the interesting comments made earlier, the historic district, let me be clear, was always in the code or intended to be in the code. What Chris Kuschel gave us didn't include it because he didn't draft a new historic district code. For the time being, we're taking the existing historic district code and putting it into that draft, that's what Carla's role here is, is essentially to finish assembly, make alterations, I know you've been working on definitions that you feel are missing or didn't get carried over correctly all weekend long, so we appreciate your quick work on that stuff right now. But inside the code itself are the meets and bounds with respect to the historic district. As I said at the workshop, Maureen McPherson and Kerry Chapman, who was the other person, had both said to me, you know, it's confusing, I said, you know what, you're right, and we had told Chris, please add, okay, please add the actual displayed version of it onto the map. And then we looked at it, and it was very light on the map, so I said, Chris, when you blow the map up, make sure that the crosshatching is even more visible, and I think it's actually done very well on this version of the map, you can tell where it is now. So appreciate Chris's folks on getting that done. One of the notes included was something that I've talked to definitely Mary separately and Burnett separately, concerns about some of the things we've heard about the town transition zone, which was a comprehensive plan issue that came up. And what we noticed from last Thursday was, or Thursday the 3rd, was that in practice, it doesn't look nearly as good as it sounded in principle. And so we're warning everybody, it's still on the map, it's remaining on the map for the time being, but future versions of it probably won't have it on it, we're going to have to figure out what the correct version of zoning would be for those parcels that are currently included in that. It's probably self-evident for a couple of them, like Court Street is a residential street, so it probably goes back to residential approach, but we'll sort that out. But the idea here is, okay, it is part of a comprehensive plan, we need to still look at it to make sure that there wasn't a good reason for it, or maybe we minimize it as an overlay at layer point. But for now, we heard it over and over, it was pretty clear, it was an overshoot by, you know, whatever happened there, and so we will address it accordingly. But for now, it's on the map because that's the map that is considered the draft zoning map, we just fixed the overlay for the historic district, make sure it was showing there. So we made no amendments to the map, except making sure that overlay, which already was in existence by wording, is there in visual. That is the only change. There are things that I know from April 3 that we need to work on, like splitting middle of the street for different districts. Now, there may be examples, Anna and I were talking about this one day, and she thinks and she thinks that maybe there's certain cases where that still would be correct, but for the most part, I don't think that's gonna be realistic. But we'll figure out, there is a street where it applies. We gotta look at the setbacks, obviously. You know, a couple of other things that came out. We've got comments going. Because those maps got delayed by a few days more than what I wanted to see, I suggested to Carla, what do you think if we went to the 25th? Would that create any problems? She said, no, I think you actually should based on the delay in the maps. And so, here we are, and publicizing, we'll accept council 25th. And it makes sense too, because Jen gets back on the 21st. She's the keeper of comments. So at least when she gets back, she can get them on orderly so that folks can see them going up on that sheet. So this week will be kind of like a deep breath. So if you submit comments, they'll get into the document. It's just gonna take till Monday for that to happen. In the meantime, earlier tonight, there was an article in the Times Union entitled, "Fate of Historic District Debated in Balsam Spa", and subtitled, "Mayor Rossi, Mayor Frank Rossi Says He Is Working With State Parks Department To Determine Way Forward." I can read you the entire article, but I will read you some highlighted sections because I'm at that point where, as I said on social media, and I'll say it to anybody that asks or doesn't ask at this point, the level of misinformation going on is honestly pretty disappointing. We'll just use that word and move here. Mayor Frank Rossi, who also rejected a recommendation from the village's Historic District Commission to adopt the state's standards of historic preservation of structures. That's not true. Actually, we were looking at that code and looking with Frances Stern at how to apply that code to Balsam Spa. Frances said to both Carla and me in an email recently, "That code is not one size fits all." That was her direct quote to us, which was ironic because I'd used it elsewhere that same day, and there's no way she could have known I was saying it, so there's an agreement. It's not one size fits all. I said apparently that I removed the historic district from the overall zoning plan because one size fits all could force residents to adhere to higher standards in caring for their properties. Well, that's one part of it. There's a much larger part of it, that there's a balance to be achieved, and there's an entire 90% of this village that currently is not in a historic district that probably would like to understand what this means or what it could mean ultimately to their properties. And that needs to be really messaged properly in this whole process as we get there. The state confirmed that I'm working with State Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation, quote, "to determine the best ways for seed for a community like ours." Appreciate Frances for confirming that because that's what Carla and I continue to do to try to make sure, we got a boatload of materials that we're waiting for right now to look at this. Then it says, "A plan remains undefined in some fear that the historic district will not survive, except for the fact that we've said over and over, the historic district is going to continue inside the new code as status quo, and that the whole idea is to expand historic preservation to the entire Village of Balsam Spa." So I don't know how that went to, "It won't survive."
I mean, should we have a conversation? Are this announcements or political stuff?
In recent years, there were two instances when the planning board's approvals ran counter to the commission's standards. Those two, I believe, were an ADU on High Street, if I had a guess, and the Beehive, which went through an enormous process and a process that some people thought should be akin to the design review board process in Saratoga Springs, if not worse, which I don't think belongs here in the Village of Balsam Spa. I saw Mayor Safford today at a baseball game in Saratoga, and he can't say enough bad about how that process is affecting his property owners in Saratoga Springs. Trustee Sean Raymond wrote, quote, "To protect a neighborhood that's historic, you would need to register every house on the historic register to protect the neighborhood from development out of character with surrounding properties." Now, I know Wendy sometimes boxes up quotes, so I'm gonna give you the benefit of the doubt that there was a double speak in there that you didn't intend because why would you register something already registered in that? But, according to what we understand from Frances, only a few properties, literally a few properties are registered in the Village of Balsam Spa. We do not have this enormous national registry list of properties. Now, does that mean that we don't have additional ones? No. And that's part of the whole idea here, is we gotta begin to identify those, and that's part one of the model code to a certain degree, and something actually that I think is pretty universally embraced and accepted out there, that we're going to try to figure out all the historic landmarks and buildings in this community and get them some kind of special treatment. John Cromie, allowing people to, quote, "opt out", he said, quote, "The effect of that destroys the whole purpose of the commission in the first place. What we're trying to do is preserve architecture that reflects our history. How can you have a district preserve the housing and ensure people, their investment is protected?" If a neighbor can opt out, then their investment cannot be protected. Anyone who suggests that doesn't understand what historical district is. Well, I understand what historical district is, and we've said it multiple times for over a year right now. If the first part of your definition of historic in historical districts is investment, then I think you're missing something because it's based on character first and foremost. Investment is a great ancillary benefit to protect by all means, but it's about character. And I don't know why we continually go to the word investment because that is a self-serving statement.
This doesn't seem, this doesn't seem like announcements. It seems like you're, it's a top, like a new business or old business. And so, do we have a conversation? Or is this you just?
Can I finish what I was stating here? Thank you.
I don't know. Is this announcements? I don't know if this is announcements.
Gary Stevenson, who's here, hey, there he is. He also said that the commission's recommendation to go with the state landmark model preservation code, which will make the village eligible for grants, was a no-brainer. What we learned, Gary, is that the grants are like $160,000 split between 80 communities a year. And so, the grants are for programming. It's not for anything, let's say, beyond educational for historic, which is nice. If you can get them, get them.
Research, research on the historic buildings that should be on the historic register.
But it's extremely limited, and it was one of the selling points that doesn't seem to be a realistic selling point from what we've heard from Frances along the way. But we're working on that as well.
Grants and tax breaks.
There's no tax breaks associated with becoming a CLG, and that was underscored.
And to step in the direction. Go ahead.
Trustee Ben Baskin thinks Rossi has not defined what he would like to happen in the historic district because he wants to come up with his, I believe, own plan without interference from the Historic District Commission or the Zoning Advisory Board. I will be clear that I have had conversations with Carrie Chapman, who's on the Historic District Commission, Steve Springer, who's on Historic District Commission, Don Traver, who's on the Historic District Commission, and found out that there's a certain amount of agreement that the micromanagement level going on with some of the alterations, the minor alterations that have been encountered and looked at, there's an agreement that we're probably going too far in certain things, that we need to sort of take a step back and look at what the proper level of alteration is to trigger what we look at or what we do from that perspective. And that's how you begin to get the integrity and the confidence of property owners up there because unfortunately, we've had a lot of problems with the integrity and confidence level of the HDC for various purposes over the last couple of years.
All right, now that you mentioned my name, can I say something?
I've got one, I'm almost there. I'm almost there.
All right, then I'll respond.
Yep, no problem.
Great, thanks.
You continued, "He has not shared what he intends to do. The status of the historic district is in limbo." It's really not, and I've explained it in multiple ways what the intent is and what we'd like to do and want to take it slow. Rossi has disbanded the zoning advisory committee. I don't know who gave that nugget, but yeah, no, I did not. But, apparently, if it's in the Times Union, it must be true, so there you go.
So I guess what I'm asking for, because of the group sheet she didn't mention in the quote, was that you're not really talking to us as a board about these things. You're talking at us, like you just said, "I'm doing this, I'm doing that, I want this, I want that." I would like to be part of that conversation in a, you know, mutually give and take kind of way so that I understand what you're thinking of because that's the most you've ever told us in one place about what you want with the story and your concerns and issues. But it's not, it's, this is not the format for that, so I would, it would be good to have that conversation.
I think.
It's not really, doesn't really belong under announcements.
In my own defense, Ben, I think I put two straight days worth of posts to clarify, fix, and everything else.
On your post? On your Facebook page? I don't look at your Facebook.
I look at yours, and yes, you do, because you end up.
Well, once in a while, but not regularly. I try not, I try not to. I try not because it's, it has a lot of stuff I rather not read. It's very political.
We have more direct means of collaborating.
Yeah, don't, please don't communicate to us through Facebook.
Have you guys picked up the phone and called them?
We can email us, too.
If you're working, I'm asking you now. I would like, I would like more, more information on what you're working on, and that is like something we've always asked for.
We have been pretty clear that what we've been trying to do over the last weeks is look at the model code. I'm gonna give an example of where things fall apart a little bit with what's hoped for and what the reality is here. And I've said this before, so this isn't me saying something new. If you take the model code, and it's written by the state of New York, it's a 50-year rule, essentially, as the kind of one of the first starters for what's determined to be landmarked historic. A number of properties in the current existing historic district wouldn't qualify, most likely. And so, the hope is to keep the existing historic district intact, right? Am I?
Yeah, I guess.
Well, let me finish my statement. I just, I want, are we in agreement with that general principle that that, those streets would like to remain intact as a historic district?
Right, but what I'm thinking behind my, behind that is you've said you want to expand that to everybody, and I don't think that's viable.
Why isn't it viable?
First of all, it may not be appropriate for the entire village.
Well, no, 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 not every property just automatically becomes historic. That's not what it is. It's available to everybody, is what the statement is. And so that's where the whole question of opt-in, opt-out becomes somewhat playable because people are concerned. Are you gonna make it mandatory? So suddenly, I have to, when I want to go change my window, I have to go get leaded glass that quadrupled the cost type of things.
So these are the details that require sort of extended conversation because if it's a smaller district, you probably do want to make it mandatory within that district, and people know if I buy a house there that's historic district, I would not make it, you can't make it mandatory, it's the whole village. But there are buildings that can just on their own apply for historic status, and they don't have to be in a district, and they can do so then in terms of opt-in. An owner can just go ahead and do that now, but I would not ever make the entire village the historic district. Anyway, these are the kinds of ins and outs details that would be great to talk to you more about.
Ray, Ray Otten brought up something up to me recently, or to, I think you were talking to Rory too about this, Rory Connor. Your house on Meadowbrook, is, what's the history on it?
It's 170 years old. It was originally a blacksmith shop, then it turned into a wagon shop. And that's why it's also was in the business district back then. And it's now residential. I've never been approached by anybody to say, hey, you have a historic home. Would you like to be part of our historic district?
And there are stories like that throughout this village that you'll hear.
Oh, there's a lot of them.
And so, again, the balance, Ben, the balance is what we're trying to achieve here. What you're saying, which is you don't think it's practical to call everything, no, you're right. It is impractical, but to make the availability the same for everybody. But, we can't operate, I don't think legally under two sets of rules either, where somehow we get everybody in the existing historic district, even if they don't qualify under the definition we would pass, that status. So we're treating that section different from that section down there in how we handle what is or isn't historic, and that's a legal thing that Carla's gonna have to look at with this as well. That's why, that's why this is such a convoluted issue to take our time with because we don't realize fully what we're playing with, you know, to, you know, use a colloquial term.
It needs to be done carefully. I mean, my response to Ray is you can, you can on your own apply for historic status. You don't have to be part, no one has to approach you and ask you to do it. The fact that there's a historic district commission makes it easier for you to achieve that because you work with local people to do that, but you can go ahead and do that. You don't have to be part of a district.
Yeah, but you may not be a national register material, and then it becomes a different question.
Well, that's up to that specific.
Don't worry, I don't want to.
Why, why?
I'd have to take out all my windows and, and all that kind of stuff, so.
But that's, that's the concern and the messaging concern ultimately that we have to be careful about as a village because our intent and the perception of the intent become very different things. And this is why articles like this really become problematic to me because it suggests something entirely wrong about what the intent is because we're trying to be super careful to make sure we're not hurting or harming property owners, but also honoring the history and tradition and character of the Village of Balsam Spa. And it just amazes me every time I read something that says, "I don't care about the historic district." When I've been the one kind of banging the table, and Burnett's always like looking at me like, what are you doing? We need to do better with the historic nature and preservation of this village. And I've been saying it from the start of the entire zoning process, and yet, articles like this come out like, "I'm trying to kill the historic district."
I think, I think a lesson learned is better communication with the whole community that's been involved with the Historic District Commission. Also, there have been a number of undermining actions recently related to the Historic District Commission that would justifiably make people feel as if there's a hostility to the Historic District Commission, so it's not coming out of left field that they're worried about your intentions, so, and intentions of this village in general. So I think better communication about what's involved. The fact that the zoning code, I believe, at least last time I had placeholder for Historic District Committee, right, didn't have the whole.
I explained that earlier.
No, but it, so, literally, that means it's been taken out and there's nothing there right now. And so, it's a big blank. Now, if we're saying the current zoning is going to remain in there, the current historic district zone is gonna remain in there, it should probably be put in, back in now.
You're not understanding what Chris did because I think you're finding out the hard way right now. What he did was, he started from scratch on code, okay? And that means, so, he didn't remove it, he just didn't put it in because he wasn't directed to do anything with historic district stuff based on the state it was in at that point in time. And we knew that that would be part of her process at that point to go put it in as status quo. Again, the subjects we're not touching are status quos for the time being, PDDs. There's no PDD currently, ADUs, there's limited amount of treatment.
There is a PDD in the zoning right now.
That is.
It's in there.
And we stated it should not have been. It's going to be removed because it was.
All right, well, people are responding to something online as it is now.
But you, okay, but not for nothing, Ben, I stated right in front on the third, it didn't belong in there, it was an accident. Chris admitted to that fact. I stated that you and I are actually in more agreement than you realize about certain things on PDD, and you stood up and still went kind of rogue on that whole thing.
It seemed to me that you were surprised that there was language still in there. But the other thing I'd like to just state is, we do have an existing zoning advisory committee, and again, it should, people should attend who are members or resign. They should be replaced if they don't attend, and the zoning advisory committee should be allowed to fulfill its mission and provide some recommendations about historic district and all the other issues that are outstanding.
Ben, it's, it's our turn. It's the public's turn. It's our turn.
It really isn't because they have.
Oh, no, it really is.
It really isn't.
Oh, it really is.
It really isn't.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Because we're still, we're still collecting public comments, and their mission is to, to look at that public comment, incorporate it into the next version of the draft, and then deliver it to us. So we're right in the process of revising the draft. They should be delivering it to us.
Bernard, your thought was not.
I generally think at this point that it should be with board. I'm excited to read everybody's comments.
I've been reading them actively.
You're capable people, you know, our eternity's, our, wow, I didn't say attorney right. This just tells you how tired, our eternity. You know, our attorney is capable. We're all capable people. I think at this point, we just need to move forward and continue, and I'm honestly just.
As long as you reference comments, I just, I'm gonna comment that, given Jen's absence for managing the comments, it would have been, it made even more sense to use the ZAC-approved method of the Google forms than, because then now there's this gap in delay because she's not here.
It will be out.
And posting comments.
They will be posted, and all of them will be posted in the same manner with fair access and fair acknowledgement of who's posting, as in no acknowledgement of names, et cetera. And this is the best way to handle it, honestly, and that was something that Carla was pretty stripped on, on how this could be handled. Okay, last thing for me, two things actually I should say, not to, you know, take away from Mary, but the Easter egg hunt was phenomenal, and thank you to the Events Task Force for what they did to put that together. You know, again, another rainy day, but again, you know, moving to the inside entirely was a great success. And thank you to them again for, you know, trucking through that. And everybody that showed up to fill eggs, 4,000 eggs was done in record time.
4,060.
4,060 eggs.
Danny, who's counting? I want to say that's amazing.
It is.
Awesome.
And finally, to discuss the bond anticipation situation. So, for those that aren't realizing, we have begun moving water increases that are in excess of inflation. So we anticipate about three and a quarter percent a year for inflation that we should be considering every year moving up the water rates for, for the purpose of staying with inflation. It's the additional amount, so last year was eight percent that we approved. We've only had one period that, that has taken in. So another four and three quarters percent is going to be put in a reserve account for water improvements. Now, the approach that has been advised by our financial advisor is because we don't need all $1 million at once. Because we're gonna be paying for the million, $12,000 and any maintenance in three pieces. Is to first take on the ban and to do that for anything that we can achieve that with initially.
Sorry, that's less expensive than just using our own money.
There's opportunity cost either way. You're foregoing interest in a higher interest rate account.
Like, have you done the calculations?
It's about the same, Ben. And at the end of the day, what it's gonna let us do is arbitrage if we have a better rate. Because we're under the arbitrage limit, so we could actually make money from the process like this. The rate we get for a ban is below the rate that we can interest spare on money. So keep that in mind too. But also, eventually, you want to go one to maximum two big bonds later on if you can. Because the origination fees are much lower. And also, the higher you bond, up to a $10 million cap, if things get funky at 10 million, what you have to do, you usually will get better rate access, et cetera. So, we've been in good contact with him about, hey, we're doing this, but we also now have this capital plan idea moving forward that is well beyond our means. You know, we've got to save something in our, our bond balance down the line here. But, you know, we're trying to balance all this stuff. And he says, this was the way to go. We had done the bond resolution already last year, we had dusted that off, moving forward with it to get the first payment out. Because they'll probably be done with John Street Tower, give or take around June 15th. But this will be in motion, so the cost for this year, the origination costs will be actually in this fiscal year most likely. Any payoff is gonna be actually in the following fiscal year, 2027. Because one year from 15 possibly, if that's the official start date. But, long story short, it's only, it's interest only in that situation. So, interest being made on the money possibly, interest out, we'll see how that plays out. So, it's advised, and then we evaluate in the next year. Do we want to up it to another ban at that point? Or do we want to wrap it into a full bond? Because maybe we've gone to the DPW building at that point, which will be probably about $4 million for the stuff that we're gonna be investing in. So, as we do this, we're going to face these decisions along the way. This is the easiest one so far, to go to a ban approach for right now, based on what he's evaluating, what he sees in the market. So that's why we're going ban route.
And that's for John Street.
That's for John Tree Tower, you got it. 361-935 is the first amount that's owed for this.
All right, so, then we, we had a contract for regular monthly payments.
Annual.
Annual payments?
Annual, yeah. With maintenance included, plus the insurance for if they were to go out of business, that we would be able to go and get our money back for the maintenance, if you remember. So that's all bulked into the annual payments. What we're focusing on when we're doing this stuff is really the three payments. And then we're gonna have enough money, we're gonna be starting to reserve away from the water increases. So eight percent this past year, proposing six and a half percent when we do it in two weeks. And then we'll see if we're going online with respect to Milltown, which could be up to another $210,000 revenue. If that happens, we probably could cease those increases for a good period of time. But, but we're factoring in that we're going to have more water revenue being thrown into the reserve that we'll be able to pay for maintenance fees and everything else later on. And then we also have to face the next two towers as well. That was why the two, three towers together was one and three quarters million when I've written up a capital plan. Because the other two towers are probably gonna be together about three quarters of a million at the most to do those and get the maintenance plans going on those as well. So, we're trying to, we're trying to get a good plan for 30 years together, that was the whole idea here. Keep our rates at market rates for water, you know, especially outside. I know at times you and I were talking a few weeks ago out there. But at the end of the day, we had shown, you go to other communities, go to town of Ballston's outside rate, go to Half Moon's outside rate, Colony I think was one, Mechanical was another one. And you'll see we are within the market rate of the area and the market rate for Milton, we know as well from the evaluation that was done by the RAP back when. So, long story short, it's an attempt to ma-manage this, to make sure we had the funding set aside, which I know is one of your things you were talking about earlier. And I think we're doing a reasonably good job of it and making sure our accountant knows what the reserve over. Because we did establish a reserve account for water towers. And one for fire trucks, they're fixing that one right now as we speak, actually. We've tracked what should be in the fire one, that should be about $240,000, I think I told you the other day, in that one. So, we know what we're doing, we're doing it in a very conscious, transparent way here. And we just want to make sure that we have the money available to attack all these different things over the next few years. That's the most important thing to me, is making sure we know where that money's coming from. So we don't ever wake up one day and be like, oh my God, what are we doing here? Okay, that's that. Treasurers report briefly, ten of budgets set to be approved in the next couple of weeks, CHIPS. We got our final disbursements of about $108,000 for this fiscal year and the state's fiscal year. Banking, the funds that we had in Generations Bank, we had approved, we moved near class and it did happen. And you have seen the monthly reports already. I've spoken enough between reading and just pontificating about life in general, so now it's your turns. And Bernadette, the issue.
I'm gonna skip this week, we'll wait till next week.
I love it. Mary?
I will be quick. The library construction, the community room is just about done. So we should be meeting back there in May perhaps, or the beginning of May.
June is the worst is what I think we got from them, but we got some pretty optimistic May stuff the other day.
That's exciting. Also, Nourish is combined with, I can't speak, Friends of Ballston Spa Library and doing shirts. You can purchase a shirt online or go into Nourish and order it. There's a variety of styles and sizes, colors, and they range from $25 for youth to $55 for adult sweatshirts and then in between. And the design is beautiful and it, again, it's to help support the library. You can go to nourishedesigns.com, collections and Friends of Ballston Spa Library. BACC is also partner, they're partnering with Hoffman's Car Wash for an April fundraiser. It's Clean Cars for Kids campaign as part of Hoffman's Helping Hands programs. So BACC will receive 50% of each car wash voucher that is purchased online. And you can purchase these until May 2nd and.
But it's in April, you said?
It's April and it goes until May 2nd. And then Ballston Area Seniors, if anyone is still on the fence about joining, these people stay very active. They're having a paint and sip on Friday, April 25th at 2:00 PM.
What are they sipping?
And they're also doing a beginner's quilting class the fourth Thursday of each month. And the first class is scheduled for Thursday, April 24th at 9:30 AM.
You mentioned Betsy at Nourish and I, my college roots back to the Seflowitzes at Union College. And to see everything that they do for the community, I'm so damn proud of them and what they've done to make such inroads here. And make sure that she knows how proud I am of, especially her, which is the group I'm with, the principal of Ball Spa High School. It's a focus group basically of the area. And just always giving, her and Kim, obviously, are a coffee planet, work together very well on that stuff. So, I just can't say enough about what they do over there. Ben?
Yeah, they, they've also did a design for the bottle museum.
Yep.
You can see it in the window.
Yep. Ben, go ahead.
All right, so the Committee on the Arts, they got funded by Saratoga Arts Foundation, $2,500 for the Sounds of Summer and Sounds of Winter. And that has been a very popular series for the last couple of years. And as you saw today, they also funded $5,000 for summer sketch and print class by Octavia and Maria. Unfortunately, we did not get a Historic Churches stained glass windows walking tour funded. And also, we wanted to do a, they wanted to do a Front Street Art Fair and that wasn't funded either. So, we'll look for other ways to get those things done. Their, their next events on April 26th, 7:00 PM, Brookside Museum, they have a poetry performance reading. Again, you should always register because many of these things are booked up in Brookside. And then, so you can go to either Brookside Museum website or the Committee on the Arts Facebook page. On April 27th at 2:00 PM, also at Brookside is the Cello Experience Sound Bath. And as far as I'm aware, there's still spaces there, but again, that'll probably fill up quickly. And then their next meeting is April 16th, this Wednesday, 7:00 PM at Brookside.
Is that it, we've got Park and Tree too, or?
Yeah, keep on saying.
You want me to go to Sean and then come back?
All right, I got it.
Yeah, okay.
The Park and Tree Board is planning on Arbor, an Arbor Day celebration, tree planting demonstration on Saturday, April 26th, 10:00 AM. They're planning to plant two street trees in the space in front of the Methodist Church at 101 Milton Ave, where trees were recently removed. The two trees are black tupulos. It is a small to medium tree that should be an ideal street tree. They are known for their vibrant autumn colors and shades of yellow, orange, and scarlet. We will talk about proper tree planting, what to consider when planting a street tree, and ways to ensure the tree's long-term success.
Narrow roots. That's one big one.
This family-friendly event is open to all who might want to learn something new about tree planting or simply want to celebrate Arbor Day and be present during this addition to the Village Urban Forestry. The two trees are donations from the Cornell Master Forest Owner Program to support community forests. The next Park and Tree meeting is tomorrow, April 15th, 7:00 PM, take place at Cornell Cooperative Extension, Room 50, West High Street.
And let me tell you, Mr. DOT, after seeing what a disaster trees can be on certain sidewalks when they're not properly chosen, I can see why DOT kind of says to communities they plant trees in, here, they're yours. Good luck with them.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm not really sure what the thought process is when you put in locusts. Because locusts have the shallowest root structure.
Yep.
And they also propagate, some of them propagate by going and then coming up and.
You can see by the kind of the crown they form themselves in the root system, yeah.
So, yeah, not the best tree.
But the great job, by the way, did you get to see?
And I saw, it looks great. They did a great job. And actually, he said, told me the other day, he's like, we're gonna keep doing this, we really should get concrete forms.
And by all means, I mean, that's, if, there are other spots on that side of the street, so they need to be addressed. And then a couple on the other, on the, what's called the east side of the street, that need to be looked at too in four coming years. But there's no way we could devote their entire attention to doing this type of stuff. Because it took three weeks right there in its entirety for them.
Anyways.
Yep.
So this is what's going on with DPW. We've completed stump removal, a repair of sidewalks on Milton Ave, just, and just have to plant new trees.
We're out of.
Yep. All DPW attended a certified excavator's course and sponsored by Udig and National Grid. Scott thought it was a very good class. We started the process of Wisewell Park project. At this time, all sidewalks have been removed, San Souci water pipe has been relocated. And are now working on the replacement of the sidewalk. Just doing the site. The flagpole will be relocated on Friday with the help of Roseell Crane Service.
Yeah, we need a crane for that one because of how tall it is.
Had a water main break on Ballston Ave, a sewer plug on Charles Street, both have been repaired. And the street garbage cans have been put out along the streets. Also been working with Smith Controls and T-Mobile for the telemetering system for Colonial Hills Tower. I guess that's been a struggle.
Yep.
And hopefully, it'll be running smoothly by Monday afternoon.
We are in, yeah, we are in constant communication right now with USG about being fair with them with their timing. Because we also want to be able to make sure we've got about four or five days running off of Colonial Hills Tower with no problems in terms of demand for water and everything else before we commit to people going inside the tank and starting that work. So, we punted a week already and we may have punted by another week as of today. Because we sort of said we didn't have them ready today. And we had another T-Mobile issue, to be honest with you, is what we're trying to deal with. Then we would punt them one more week. That's why I say probably June 15th is that goal date now. And we're gonna, we're, come hell or high water, no pun intended, we're gonna get that tower fixed.
Okay. And last, all solders and plows have been removed from the trucks. Figures crossed, winter is over. To have them ready for brush pickup, starting the week of the 21st. And that's all I have.
I drove to New York City rep on Saturday, I couldn't believe the amount of snow that fell along the Taconic.
It was, it went south of us, the snow.
Unbelievable, it was crazy the amount that was there. Okay, no, this is no new business, public comment on any issue, three minutes. Again, raise your hand if you'd like to speak, anybody on Zoom. Saw a Zoom hand late, earlier, that, I went back down, so either it was an accident or they were just out of place at that time. But if you did have something to say, now's the time to raise your hand on Zoom. Liz, go ahead. Yuri, I'll let you be the number two, I saw your hand going up there. And let me just change this.
This is Formosa 89, hi. Just to finish the thought on my comments on the budget, there, none of the capital planning is in this budget. And it's like, you know, you talked about there's gonna be debt for the water tower, there's, there's no indication of that in that budget. So, you know, it looks like nothing's gonna happen, but I assume something is, so I think it should be in, in it. My other topic is about this map. One of the things that sort of bothered me was that little white piece.
You were gonna talk about it the other night, other, other day, yeah.
And so, I, because I've seen other maps that show that being village property. So, I went to the county and looked there, and then I contacted the school, I talked to Brian Seriani. And he sent me the deed they have. And on that deed, it says, successors and form a certain piece or parcel of land lying in being, and that's a little long. But it definitely says the Village of Ballston Spa. So, I think the county needs to correct this unless they have something else that says it's not in the village. I assume this deed is accurate.
Anna, there were issues probably with the annexation of different things throughout time, is that what's probably happening there?
Yes, and we have deeds that say they're in the Town of Hadley and they're really in the Town of Providence. So, it may just be referring to that it is in the Village of Ballston Spa, not that it is village, in, in actually the village. Everything we have shows that that is not in the village and that's where it's been for decades.
So, the long story short is we're gonna be looking deeper into it just to make sure. Because it's, it's an odd anomaly for sure, but it may have, have something to do with the rail line scenario there, I don't know.
Because it, it looks strange to have a piece of property there.
What was that?
Kayleen Drive was an annexation.
Yeah.
That was also.
Correct.
The line used to go up and around and over. So when it was, when Kayleen was annexed, that was, you know, at least that part that was annexed, not the other part.
Well, I think it should be part of, it came up because of zoning, you know? Because we were talking about having some sort of zone that would protect parkland. And the discussion was, well, if it's an official park, it's protected. But if it's the fairgrounds or it's the field, it's not.
My plan was first determine the correct answer in its entirety. If it could not be determined, or if it was determined as not, it would have to be Town of Ballston, I would assume, because of where it's landing.
No, no.
Or, well, it could be both actually too, because depending on where you are.
No, east side.
Well, look, look back to Kayleen, Kayleen digs into the Town of Ballston.
That side's Ballston, the east side's not.
Right, but there's a gap, there's still a gap going that, that far, is what I'm saying, so.
Oh, so you want to extend it?
Oh, so you want to extend it behind Kayleen, as you're saying?
The contiguous basically would be the goal.
I thought it was.
So we would go to the town to see if they're willing to annex essentially in that type of situation. But it might take a legislative act to do that too. So it might not be an instant easy answer in that respect. No, I, I, as we said when you were standing here the other day, it's it's an anomaly that needs to be looked into. We will.
Yeah, because it's right across the street from my house.
I'm well aware of this.
And I do not want some skyscraper going up or whatever because Milton decides to, you know, use that and the school decides to sell it. I have a personal interest in that one.
Yeah, it sounds like.
Hey, all Sundays are quiet, right? Okay, Gary, I think you were dead, sorry.
Gary Stevenson, forty-five West High Street. I have concern about village transparency. I have two specific items stemming from our recent zoning board hearing. First is the fact that our attorney's letter, which was sent to the entire board prior to the meeting, was not included in the minutes from the meeting. The minutes even reflect that this letter contains additional information related to the appeal. So therefore, the letter, in the interest of transparency, needs to be appended to those minutes, please. The second item is apparently unbeknownst to us or our attorneys. There was a written resolution conclusion of law which was produced on our hearing on March tenth. As the appellant, I only became aware of this existence of this document today. Further, our attorneys did not receive this document until later in the day after my query with the village. This is a document that was produced March tenth and was not made available until April fourteenth, today, thirty-five days later. And apparently only after my query as to what is this? This is not the transparency the citizens of this village deserve. Thank you. And on the historic district, I want to clarify something. There's a lot of interchange of words here about a landmark building of some sort and historic district. Those are two different things, okay? And so when speaks of a building that's independent, like for instance, this building is a landmark. The code, the state code, has provision for the local landmark determinations, okay? Which is different from a historic district, which is where different rules apply and where some of the factors that were mentioned about neighbors and the types of changes that can be made and how neighbors are affected and how the the actual character of that area is affected. So those are two different things and I I've been hearing them used interchangeably and confusing. So just in the in the in the interest of education, let's make sure we use the right terms for those two different things and understand they're two different things. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Just for clarity on this building, it is not deemed historic.
It's what?
It is not deemed historic by the requirements for replacement of paint and windows and stuff like that. We have gone through that actually to evaluate that. Did you want to provide anything? Okay, that's fine. Jared, I see on Zoom. Jared, give me a second here because I'm now getting this myself, so. Sorry. Trying, Jared?
Yep, thanks. Jared Ekalucci, twenty-four chap. You know, I I think most of the public agrees that we should be careful and intentional with the historic district as we rezone. I think most of the public feels that way about rezoning in general. The care and intent that has been spoken about tonight seems to be at odds with what's happening. I've heard this evening that we need to take our time and be careful. I've also heard that it's time that we need to move forward and just get this done. I'm not sure how we can take our time and be careful if we're forcing ourselves to move forward because it's time. A better approach, I think, would be to slow down and complete zoning in a comprehensive manner. We can extend our engagement with Fisher and allow this act to continue its work with the public input and with all of the public comments we've so far received. The second thing I want to mention on the John Street Monopole. Have residents in that neighborhood been consulted about this pivot to a standalone monopole rather than using the water tower? And I I know there's not a lot of open space by the water tower. So where will it be constructed? Do we have any sense of that? And would that require a clear cutting of that wooded area that borders the water tower? Thank you.
The current shack that's there that is going to be abandoned that we've used as our own storage facility for various things, that is actually going to be removed. That's going to be the general location of it. There are setbacks that are within the setbacks required. And we had just gotten as village the permit application. Now it's been sent over to zoning. So at that point, it's going to be handled by the normal notice proceedings that are required by zoning. And also I had promised the supervisor, Tom Milton, that we'd let him know what's going on and we knew that it was going to be heard at the next zoning board meeting and it most likely will be, I believe, yes. So we'll make sure that they get that as well. So hopefully that's helpful and thank you for your time.
It'd be great to see public information sooner rather than later on that, I think. I know there's that abandoned shack that you're talking about, Frank. I'm I I also know monopoles tend to need a lot of support from, you know, structural support that comes down to help them stand straight. So I I just want to make sure that residents in that area are are aware of what's happening there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Ellie? Ellie, thank you for hosting one of our maps at the Bottle Museum.
You're welcome. It's getting a lot of foot traffic.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. And you had an art show this weekend too, so I hope that actually drove people to see some of that, right? It's a bottle show.
I want to extend an invitation, excuse my voice, I'm having a little. Vralja. I want to extend an invitation to the board, to the BFBPA sponsored networking breakfast on May 6th from nine, from eight thirty to nine, not eight o'clock to nine thirty. And when you come, you'll see the new Spouting Springs of Saratoga exhibit, the new display, backlit display case for the mineral water bottles, the new uranium exhibit, and the the art gallery with fifty works of multimedia art on display. And they're all on the second floor and you like to avoid that. So you gotta make the effort to get over there. It's worth the trip. We are displaying the zoning map for the village and it's getting interesting foot traffic. I've left the admin email address there if somebody wants to use it to write.
And if somebody wants a zoning map business-wise, especially a restaurant that's open at night type of idea, here's a way to get some foot traffic, it sounds like, or some business in there. So just let us know. We have two more.
And also, we also have a fundraiser with the Nourish t-shirts. And I want you to be aware that every t-shirt you buy, money goes to the to your cause. But most importantly, money goes to the Northeastern Food Bank. And it's a win-win. Okay, and on June first, over eighty vendors are for the Saratoga Bottle Show at the Fairgrounds. It's our major fundraiser. Get yourself up there and you'll know what the bottles are all about. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ellie.
Oh, quick question. Are you having your uranium glass on display?
Yes, it is.
That's why you're blowing so much. I see a hand back there. Anna?
Anna Stanko, thirty-two, Ken Street. Ellie reminded me, Frank, you were supposed to talk about the two of five.
I, yeah, I know. Go for it.
I'll get a quick thing. The Saratoga Academy historian Lauren Roberts has started a new program to start the two-fiftieth revolutionary kickoff. It's called Two of Five Sea.
Do you want to grab them in my office or?
Paul Revere was one of my land, two of my sea. We have a whole bag of luminaries back there. It'd be great in the Bottle Museum, I thought, in the factory. You know, put two luminaries in there. It's just a great way to, you were supposed to remember, but I was supposed to remind you, so.
There you go.
So we, so they will be here, any businesses or anybody else that would like them.
To put it in our windows, is that?
Yes, yeah.
We have a business that's called Two of Five Sea.
Oh, we do, yeah. I'll help distribute those for you there.
Okay, anybody else? Seeing none, hearing none. So we are done with that portion. It's time for border response, et cetera. Whatever we call this part. Other businesses, including but not limited to border response, the public comment. Did you want to at this point? I I don't know if you did or didn't want to respond to that, so.
I had, I'll I'll talk to Gary afterwards. I'll talk to you afterwards. I've talked to your attorney.
There you go. The attorney talked to you.
It's effective.
The way it's supposed to be.
No, it was a month ago, but it's okay.
Okay, anybody?
Yeah, I prepared a statement. It's been approximately four months since the zoning advisory committee, the ZAC, member Michael Coffey has stopped attending meetings with Matt Burkleine, the chair of the ZAC, stating Michael Coffey had resigned per the ZAC meeting on twelve nineteen, twenty twenty-four. And per village code, in reference to committees, the trustee that nominated this member is obligated to nominate a replacement. Trustee Bernadette Vandenza has yet.
Say it right if you're gonna say my name.
Vandenza.
Vandenza. Has yet picked a replacement for her duties as the nominating trustee. There has been no resolution to disband the ZAC and a majority of ZAC members continue to meet. Therefore, trustee Bernadette should pick a replacement from the list of remaining applicants that volunteered for the ZAC per village law. I respectfully request that trustee Bernadette nominate a replacement.
Don't finish. Don't finish. He is respectfully requesting.
Nominate a replacement at this meeting since the task of filling this open position left by Michael Coffey has languished for months. If trustee Bernadette does not pick a replacement at this time, then her choice to nominate a candidate should be considered forfeit, given she has had almost four months to fulfill her obligation as nominating trustee. Furthermore, the four ZAC members that have chosen not to continue to attend ZAC meetings with the ZAC majority should be considered to have tendered their resignations by default, given they are not fulfilling their obligation per the ZAC charter. By doing so, they betrayed the public trust and intentionally obstructed the democratic process that the ZAC represents. The members that volunteered for the ZAC that no longer attend meetings and therefore in violation of the ZAC charter are the following. Matt Burkleine, the chair, Peter Martin, Rory O'Connor, and Anna Stanko. It should be noted that Matt and Rory are also on the planning board and Anna Stanko is on the zoning board of appeals. These individuals appear to find a way to attend those meetings, just not ZAC meetings. So I'd ask you, Bernadette, have you picked a candidate?
First off, your tone in your email to me was out of line. And honestly, just because you say.
I'm happy to put that on social media and let the public decide.
Now it's. I asked her to respect your time. I also asked you to, I also brought your tone in the email she's bringing up. So it's not just one person saying this. And so go ahead and put it on social media. Go ahead.
There we go.
Just because you say jump, does that mean I'm gonna say hi, hi, Sean? I mean, my God. I responded to you. We had not received a resignation. You haven't, I haven't. And honestly.
You saw the little clip.
I didn't know. You sent me something, but your tone was so outrageous in the first two that it was not worth responding to.
I see. I sent you proof, so you decided not to see.
I'll look at it, but honestly, again, I haven't received a resignation, so. First off, there was some comments that required that I follow through immediately.
So first, I've heard of it. I I it states, do you have the section of the code that you're referring to?
I think it's section D and E, or section fifteen point five subsections D and E.
Okay, that's the one I'm looking at. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page. Let's see, well, D doesn't apply. Because D says they forfeit their selection if they fail to select a committee member and that's when the initial committee. So there was no failing to selection initially. Wait, let me finish this. Please don't laugh at me.
I'm not laughing at you. I'm laughing at the law.
I didn't draft this law. This was all you guys.
Although you review laws to make sure they're kind of correct.
Sean, can we?
Okay.
Please.
You're talking about E, when it says a committee member resigns prior to the end of their term. I don't know what the term was. The village board member who originally appointed will appoint a replacement. It doesn't indicate when that has to occur, as opposed to D, which says the member forfeits it if they don't do it from three, if there's a delay in selection by a board member by more than three weeks from creation of the committee. That board member forfeits their selection. That's in subsection D. Subsection E does not specifically include that section. So under general construction law, if it's in one section and it's specifically not in another section, that was a legislative determination not to include it in the other section. So, you know, and I'm reading this for the first time now because that was never brought up and I try to avoid when you guys go back and forth on emails. Because I get too many of them.
Well, it passed in the law, so it's not the first time you're reading it. I assume you reviewed it before it got passed into law.
As I indicated, this is the first time that I have had to look at this in respect to this specific incident. Because you never asked my legal opinion, so, which I would have been happy to give you if you'd called me or emailed me directly about it. And I would have said the same thing now. It it says that the member forfeits if it's within three weeks from the creation of the committee. E does not say that. A legal construction of this is that there is no time period within which the selection needs to be made. It does say that they will appoint a replacement. So I mean, that's that's the legal interpretation that I see of it.
So what you're stating is law has no mechanism whatsoever. If a trustee intentionally does not nominate a replacement for that replacement, for an actual replacement to the committee.
Questioning, and this is a.
To you, in response to your question, no. What I'm saying is the two sections, D and E, that you just referenced, do not specifically state there's a time period.
So I'll explain the origins of this law that several of us wrote. We anticipated that there'd be resistance to this law because it is a democratic process for electing nominating committee members. And we anticipated certain people may not be open to that and would want to just not start the committee. We did not anticipate that once a committee is already started and people resign, that there would be an undermining of the of the committee's function by a failure to nominate a replacement. That was on us, that we failed to see the undermining of existing committees by this board. Obviously, the responsible thing to do is to either nominate someone to replace someone who is left or to advocate that responsibility, in which case the law certainly implies that the next in line, the most senior member would do that.
It actually does not say that at all, though.
Well.
It says specifically, if that board member is no longer a member of the Board of Trustees, then the board member with the longest seniority will choose their replacement. Bernadette is still a member of the Board of Trustees.
So the record, so then what we have to do, I guess, is to appeal to Bernadette's sense of duty that this committee should be allowed to function as intended by a vote of this board. It has not been, I offered last, or I asked you guys last meeting, if you wanted to change the board policy. You declined to respond to that offer. At any time, the three of you can change the policy to do whatever you want to the ZAC, but you never have. So as of now, the ZAC exists, it continues to exist. It has not fulfilled its mission. The mission is to deliver a draft of the zoning, of the zoning code to the board, working with the consultant. There is still, that's in process now. They just had the the public forum and there's opportunity for them to work on it based on comments. And that is a great transparent democratic way to complete this stage of the zoning process that clearly you, the three of you are not interested in pursuing. And it's unfortunate that that's what has. And it's unfortunate that that's what has clearly happened. I'm gonna call out Matt Urkellein again because as chair, he had absolutely no authority to disband the ZAC.
No, it was me, according to the Times Union, so somehow I'm mad, apparently I did it.
I'm sure he did not do it without your full support.
Are you gonna seek correction?
I'm sure he did not do it without your full support.
Are you gonna seek a correction?
But in the same, but he has state responsibility for what he did and it was outrageous that he did that.
So I would like to.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Certainly will take my time thinking about it because honestly, I don't know if you guys are familiar, shush. Honestly, I don't think you guys realize that there was a lot of dysfunction, lot of dysfunction and people don't necessarily want to work with you. So I'm gonna be honest and I'm sorry, that might be hard to hear.
Yes, it is.
I'm sorry, Ellie, but a lot of folks have said how dysfunctional it's been and if people didn't agree, it was like badgering, we saw it in email, we saw it in communications. So I'm gonna take my time before I figure out who I'm gonna subject to this kind of behavior and this kind of thing. It's with the board, I think honestly, we are intelligent enough people to sort through comments, to use our minds, to, you know, weigh in, weigh in and make notes on the code. So thank you for your suggestion, I appreciate it. It's a lot more respectful tonight than it was in the email.
I, I honestly take issue with this idea of dereliction of duty when, at the end of the day, the duty of the board right now is to handle what's left with both the zoning code and then also the additional issues. I don't know where this idea came from, that an advisory committee suddenly ran the entire show of what happens here. We appreciate the work the advisory committee did, but at the end of the day, we are the folks that have to decide what to do. And I go back to the Nysler's ROA situation, guys. You want to sit here and throw shade about dereliction of duty, you can't even come up with a three-month list over a year of what you do. And here's your chance to roll up your sleeves and get some easy, you can laugh all you want.
Yeah, I will, and I'll respond when you're done.
You're, you're fine with putting the village in a non-compliance situation further than it already was and that we're trying to fix right now because for years, apparently, nobody did this right and you've been told for a year we need to do it and yet you can't, I don't know if it's because you can't come up with an impressive list for three months or what, but at the end of the day, here's your opportunity, let's work on it because you, you're telling me I'm not transparent, this and that. I'm out there all the time saying what my belief about what the way things probably need to go in terms of process, to be careful because we're getting feedback from two different directions on, for instance, historic district stuff, or we're getting plenty of comments that I process every comment on April third and everything that's come in since and even answer questions along the way when people pose actual questions, I try to give them the answers so that if they wanted to have a much firmer comment, they'd have that opportunity out of respect for them. And, you know, we look at these things and we say, are we at a point where we need to throw the baby out with the bathwater or are, are all these manageable comments at the end of the day? The answer is, they're manageable comments, but furthermore, Carl is gonna be the first one to tell you right now that it's probably time for legal to handle some of the rewriting or changes that need to occur to make sure we have better airtight code at the end of the day with the bulk of the code. And our job to sort of parse through and say, what do we agree with or not agree with? For instance, cannabis probably should not be allowed within five hundred feet of parks is my thought on that. Try to keep it from front street because of the parking issues and traffic issues it could cause in addition to the safety issues for minors that will be in parks, et cetera. That never made it to that code, something that we should probably do, never heard that from the ZAC, but that doesn't mean it doesn't exist or shouldn't exist, that's our turn, we need to be doing that right now. We need to be focusing on what needs to be changed because at the end of the day, the ZAC only gets so much exposure to comments and thoughts of this community, we're, we're supposed to get it all the freaking time and we do get that feedback. So roll up your sleeves, read the damn code, propose some changes of your own because we're all gonna be doing that, that's what we're supposed to do, and take into account the comments that come in and in the next three months plus, we will have code that's approvable and then we'll rinse and repeat with the other aspects of the code that will be separate things, historic district, EDD, ADU slash short-term rental stuff and the possible downtown transition or not, that's a very possible not situation ultimately there. But that's what we're supposed to be doing, it's an advisory committee, they've advised, thank you, great job, now we have to roll up our sleeves and do it. It's not, it's more dereliction of duty if you don't at this point, in my book, that's my view.
All right, well, it is official village policy that the ZAC is responsible for delivering a draft code to us and they have not been allowed to do that.
We have a draft code.
That, that, no, it's, it's in revision before it comes to us.
It's a draft code.
They have not delivered, they have not been allowed, months ago, Matt Urkellein, without any authority, disbanded the zoning advisory committee, making it significantly undermining their ability to fulfill their mission and their mission is a good one. Their mission is to have regular meetings that are open to the public where they exclusively talk about zoning, they take comments and they discuss in a public manner what the zoning should be in order to work with the consultant to deliver to us a draft zoning code. And both public forums were originally intended to inform their efforts.
You are welcome to go to them and ask them for their views on things that you're concerned about, you are welcome to, because we actually made that offer to them in this very space to say, we love your individual ideas on different topics.
And that's the problem, a committee only works as a group.
Guess what, they're not, no, first off, no, that's not the way it works, Sean.
That's what a committee does.
Okay, it is an advisory committee.
It may advise us with one voice.
As a committee.
As a committee.
That's not the way it works, guys, sorry to tell you.
That's actually how every other committee actually works.
They have no autonomy on what they're talking about at the end of the day. They're giving us views, so we've taken things that are the no-brainer stuff that pretty much everybody agrees with ultimately that they parse through and then we took the stuff that there was an agreement on and we said, okay, we'd like to hear the different opinions individually on those things. We said it here, we offered it, Maryland acted like it couldn't be done that way, I don't know why to this day and I rescind the invitation, please do, here we are.
I, I just think it's unfortunate and anti-democratic and untransparent to have cut their, their operations short.
Anti-democratic, there were no more than five people who showed to the meetings we had.
Because of Matt Urkellein and you, with your support.
They intentionally deserted their charter.
That is the biggest punch of bull all night I've heard and on that note.
They intentionally deserted their charter and she's intentionally obstructing their abilities.
Kind of get the motion, vouchers be honored, the meeting be adjourned at nine eighteen P M.
I like the motion.
Trustee Vandenza, trustee press push discussion, all in favor? All right, opposed, motion carries, goodnight everybody, nine eighteen P M.